Welcome to the continuation of the May 13th Board of Education meeting. Sorry for the delay in starting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:30 discussing student discipline and employment of employee. We have seven Board members present, none absent. Can you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for my favorite part of any Board meeting, and that is student recognition. Mr. Purno.
Yes, we have two sets of recognition this evening. Skills USA State Competition, I'm going to start with Ken Ross. Oh, yeah. Haven't done that in a while, apologize. We're going to start with our Skills USA State Competition. This is an annual event with Mr. Ross and his students, so I'm going to invite Mr. Ken Ross to the podium along with his other teachers and coaches and students. And he will do the honors of honoring our students who are part of Skill USA. Mr. Ross.
See, I got it this year. Turn the light on. Yeah, you can get yourself lined up.
Yeah, face the camera.
Yeah, face the camera. You guys are the ones that work for this. You got it? Yeah, good evening. Welcome. Thank you very much for having us tonight. Again, I'm Ken Ross, kind of the lead skills advisor, but I work close hand in hand with Ron Roback, who joined me tonight in the automotive area, Joel Stolz in graphic arts, and Dan Kalenberg, who works in the woods and drafting area, along with Joe. And I really would like to thank the School Board and Superintendent Purno for giving us the opportunity to honor our students and all their hard work that they've done this year in preparing and going down to Springfield and competing. I'd also like to thank Ms. Smith and her administration at the high school for continuing the support that you, the School Board, and give to us. And she and her staff do a great job in making sure that our students have what they need to be prepared to compete at the state level. One little thing I want to throw in quick. We had, in our technical drafting classes, we also compete in the IDEA competition. And that's down in Bloomington Normal, and that's just a couple of weeks after Skills USA. Well, we had three students that qualified, and they competed at the state level, and Jake was one of them. But unfortunately, we weren't able to top place in the top three, but I did want to acknowledge that we did have three students that qualified at regionals and did go down to state and compete, so. Okay, now for the fun stuff. There are the other stuff. This year, we had 24 students qualify per state. When I first started working with skills, we had like four. And now, it's a rich tradition that we have here that we're able to qualify so many students. And this year, we took home six state medals in five different competitions. So that really spreads across our whole curriculum. I'd like to introduce real quick for you here, in screen printing technology, and when I call your name, do like one step up and one step back so everybody knows. In second place, we had Emma Bobley. Third place was Angelica Rosada. In power equipment technology is Tom Fisher. In principles of technology was Leah Young, second place. In technical drafting CAD, we had second place Jake Pulver. And we have one gentleman that's not here because he's playing rugby downtown Chicago, and that's our collision repair technology student who took third place, and that was Josh Gabrielson. So he was not here because he's competing. And I like to conclude that these hardworking, skilled young people, along with the other students in skills and IDEA, who did not place in the top three at the state level, represented York High School and our community very well, and we are very proud of them. Congratulations to all the winners, and thanks again for your support.
I learned very early in my School Board career that Ken Ross is a tough act to follow, so I'll be brief. You know, I gave a speech at the York Senior Awards Ceremony last Monday, and I just want to include a part that my, I took a speech that was entirely too long, edited out 75 percent, and had a speech that was entirely too long. But I just wanted to, a part that I edited out, early in my career, I got to spend a considerable amount of time with Chinese officials from various provinces who, you know, after quite a bit of discussions, would always bring up that one of their hurdles was that they felt that while they educated their kids very well, their kids weren't creative. They couldn't teach creativity, they didn't know how. At that point in my career, I didn't really understand what a comprehensive high school was all about. Now I do. And actually, I'm glad I'm not in touch with those officials because I wouldn't tell them about it anyway. So I think we are very lucky, very privileged, to live in a town with the resources to support a fully comprehensive high school and the kind of program that we run at York. So with that, we have a proclamation, very official sounding, whereas the Skills USA State Competition is acknowledged as a prestigious student recognition program in industrial arts education, which provides quality educational experiences for students in leadership, teamwork, citizenship, and character development, in addition to promoting community service. And whereas, this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and encourages schools to establish industry standards for job skill training in the classroom. And whereas, the following York Community High School students earned medals in the competition categories noted on April 3rd through 5th, 2014, in Springfield, Illinois. For collision repair technology, Joshua Gabrielson, third place. Principles of technology, Leah Young, second place. Power equipment technology, Thomas Fisher, second place. Screen printing technology, Emma Bobley, second place. Angelica?
Rosada.
Rosada, thank you very much, third place. And technical drafting CAD, Jake Pulver, second place. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and their teachers, from the York Industrial Technology Department, Ken Ross, Department Chair, Dan Kalenberg, Ron Roback, and Joe Stolz, for this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations. Now, what I'm going to make you do, Jake, lead the way, is start around here, shake the Board and the Administration's hands, and congratulations to you all.
As I said, Ken is one part of what is becoming an annual event, and I think sometimes we take these awards for granted from our students, but they really do an outstanding job. It's my pleasure now to introduce Wendy Albert, and Wendy's going to come up and introduce the students who have won medals at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of American Conference. These awards are given to students in a wide range of skills from fashion design, early childhood education and literature, to culinary arts. And so they always compete very, very well, and this year is no different. So Wendy, thank you.
All right, students, yep, if you go in front, just like our skills students did. All right, thank you. Good evening, my name is Wendy Albert, I'm the Department Chair for Family and Consumer Science. I'd like to thank the School Board and Superintendent Purno for recognizing the accomplishments of our students in FCCLA, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. I'd also like to thank our FCCLA advisors, Sabrina Benjamin, Ashley McDonough, Lindsay Goldsmith, Rachel Martin, and Sarah Merrick, as well as the families and the parents who have supported all of our FCCLA students throughout the competition season this year. FCCLA, or Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, is the nation's second-largest student leadership organization with over 200,000 student members across the country. Students enrolled in family and consumer science classes at the high school level have the opportunity to become involved in FCCLA, where they can link their learning in their subject area classroom to the community and to various projects throughout the competitions. FCCLA students develop leadership skills and life skills such as planning, goal-setting, problem-solving, decision-making, communication skills necessary as they move on in the workplace and in their families. The students before you have all competed at the regional and state level star and proficiency event competitions. They receive medals based on their overall scores in their different projects. You may notice that multiple students received the same medal, and FCCLA does this to encourage students really to achieve their best at each level of the competition. We also have some students who are awarded the Most Outstanding Project Distinction, which is the top project at the state level. So the students before you are being recognized tonight for their accomplishments at the state-level competitions this past April. The first category of events that we have is in apparel construction. And in this event, students construct garments in sportswear, semi-formal, casual dress, two-piece, prom wear, lined garments, and they are judged on everything from their fabric choice that they use for their garments, to the overall appearance and construction, as well as fit. The following students received medals in apparel construction, and we don't unfortunately have all of our students with us this evening, but students, when I read your name, if you would step forward to be recognized. Kate Leonard received gold and the Most Outstanding Project Distinction. Anna Benzen, Colette Obermeyer. Caroline Stasia received gold medals. Madison Miller and Natalie Wilber received silver medals. In the children's literature presentation competition, students select a piece of children's literature and develop an engaging, age-appropriate presentation. They present the presentation to the judges, and they're scored on everything from their presentation delivery to their visual aids, to creativity, story interpretation, and lesson sequencing. They also have to tie their project into learning objectives for the age of the children that they're presenting to. Receiving gold medals in children's literature presentation were Nora Barrett, Sidney Doiter, Elizabeth Larson, and Stephanie Reinke. And receiving silver, Sheila Evans. In the area of culinary arts, our students compete in two category events. The Culinary Arts Star Event is an intense kind of Iron Chef-style competition. Students are given a menu, and in their team of three have an hour to cook and plate the food for evaluation by the judges. We have three students that competed in culinary arts. Eric Hoff received a silver medal. Matt Arnieri and Caroline Gannat received bronze medals. The other category of culinary events are proficiency events, including pastry arts, cookie decorating, and cake decorating. In the cake decorating event, students design a cake around client specifications and prepare a cake base and all of the frosting at home. And then they bring this basically blank cake, and they have an hour to decorate the cake in front of the judges. Samantha Fleisch received a gold medal and the Most Outstanding Project Distinction in cake decorating. And Connor Walter received a silver medal. In the cookie decorating competition, students design and display a cookie centerpiece for an event based on a specific theme. Katie Fisher and Samantha Heiburger received gold medals. In the fashion apparel display event, students create a three-dimensional fashion display around a store profile and special theme. Students also give an oral presentation addressing everything from the target customer market, specific merchandising goals, accessory and prop selection, and communicate their vision for how the display would be used within the store. Abby Templeman received a gold medal in the fashion design display. In the fashion design competition, students must create a fashion line, including sketching, selecting fabric, determining cost of each of the garments. In addition to their portfolio of garments, they also must construct one of the garments. Gabriella DeGregorio wowed the judges with her innovative clothing line featuring dresses that have electrical components in them that actually go from one style to another. So, for example, a floor-length dress might become a shorter dress. So the judges were really, really wowed by that. She received a gold medal in the fashion design competition, and she'll be moving on to compete at Nationals this summer. And last but certainly not least, our interior design competitors. Students create interior design boards to meet client specifications. Their boards include everything from a scaled floor plan to selection of furnishings, furniture, samples of colors, and material swatches. Ava Heemsoth and Elizabeth Shaki received bronze medals. And then Daisy Kano and Keely Schwartz received silver medals. And they unfortunately couldn't be with us this evening, but they also will be competing at the national level this summer. So congratulations to all of our students for their hard work and involvement this year, and best of luck to Kaylee, Daisy, and Ella as you move on to Nationals this summer. Thank you, guys.
This is by far the most enjoyable and really the most important part, because it validates what we do every day. It validates that our future is in excellent hands. It validates that you are outstanding young adults, and we look forward to all that you can do in the future. So this is wonderful. Let me read our proclamation. And please, parents, I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. I'm apologizing in advance, I'll work on this. Whereas, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America FCCLA State Competition Award Program is acknowledged throughout the nation as a prestigious student recognition program in family and consumer sciences-related education. And whereas this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and encourages them to pursue careers requiring specific related skills. And whereas the FCCLA State Leadership Conference was held in Springfield, Illinois on April 11th, 2014, and the following York Community High School students earned top positions in the competition categories noted. Apparel construction, gold, Most Outstanding. Kate Leonard, gold. Anana Benson. Colette Obermeyer and Caroline Stassica, silver. Madison Miller and Natalie Wilber, children literature presentation, gold. Nora Barrett, Sidney Doiter, Elizabeth Larson, and Stephanie Reinke, silver. Sheila Evans, culinary arts, silver. Eric Hoff, bronze. Matthew Arnieri. And Caroline Gannat, fashion design, gold. Gabriella DeGregio. Fashion design display, gold. Abby Templeman, interior design team, silver. Daisy Kano and Kaylee Schwartz, bronze. Ava Heemsoth. Ava, all right, close enough, all right. And Elizabeth Shaki, pastry arts, cake and cookie decorating, gold, Most Outstanding Project. Samantha Fleisch, gold. Caitlin Fisher and Samantha Heiburger, silver. Connor Walters. And whereas Gabriella DeGregio, I am sorry. DeGregio, fashion design, and Daisy Kano and Kaylee Schwartz Interior Design Team have qualified to compete at the national competition in San Antonio, Texas in July. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride, and indeed they do, and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to our community, and especially to our families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and faculty of the Family and Consumer Sciences Department, Wendy Albert, Department Chair, Sabrina Benjamin, Lindsay Goldsmith, Sarah Merrick, Rachel Martin, and Ashley McDonough, for their outstanding achievements. So we're going to follow the same process, students, if you would, and teachers too, because it's really an achievement for you doing this. If you walk around and shake all of the Board members' hands and Cabinet's hands, and there'll be certificates for you at the end.
Why don't we take a very short break, because there's homework to be done and all sorts of extracurricular activities to be attended this evening before we go to our public comments section. And so we can take a 30-second break. If people want to have other things to do than sit at a School Board meeting, but I want everyone to know they are welcome to stay here for the duration of our meeting if you so choose. I have no blue cards, so if we're missing anybody that's here to make a public comment, please identify yourselves now. Hearing none, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Communication. Mr. Purno.
Our first item I'm going to turn over to Mr. Welton, and he'll be introducing and presenting this evening.
We have Rhonda Sanders here tonight from Corporate Benefit Consultants to present our 2014-15 renewal. Corporate Benefit Consultants has worked closely with the Administration and with the Insurance Committee for three years now.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Well, my presentation is certainly not as exciting as the last two, but how proud the parents and you as a school district must be. It's very, very, very fun to see that kind of stuff, so very exciting. As Chris mentioned, we've been working with the Insurance Committee. Where do I hit this?
Is it right here?
Got it, okay. So we've been working with the Insurance Committee over the last year in making sure that we're watching how claims are trending, keeping them updated on where we're headed for 2014. So some of the things that we'll talk about tonight is, I'll start by recapping for you where we were at last year at this time and what we did in 2013, and then we'll review where we're at in 2014. So last year, the PPO1 Plan, which was your main plan that you had, had not experienced a rate increase in the premium equivalent rates since 2009, which is a phenomenal thing we want, that's a great thing to have as a district. And as a result, that plan remained grandfathered under the Affordable Care Act. And what that basically means is that that protects you as a district from having to implement certain benefit mandates under the Affordable Care Act. We will continue to have your plan grandfathered moving forward for 2014-15 plan year. The PPO2 Plan was actually eliminated completely, and it was replaced with a high deductible health plan and a health savings account. We actually rolled that out for the first time with very low participation of five employees that transferred to that plan. It's low, but it's not uncommon for a school district or municipality to experience that. As we go through the next plan year, we will continue to provide education to the entire staff about the high deductible plan, the advantages of it, to get them more educated so that when they're making decisions, they have more information to make an informed decision as to whether or not that plan would work for them and their family. We also implemented some plan changes to the HMO plans that the district offers, and that was to help offset the initial increase that we were proposing, which was a 15% rate increase. So with the help of the committee, we looked at different plan design changes to mitigate that, and we were able to lower that to 11%. So there was about a 4% savings in that, in the plan changes, but actually the premium, or excuse me, the claims this past year decreased slightly by 5%. So we definitely saw a result from those plan changes that were implemented. And then dental rates were increased by 3.6%, and at the time, dental trend was at 5%. So there was a small increase to those numbers last year. This year, for the first time on the PPO1 Plan, we will experience an increase of 7.95% in the premium equivalent. So this follows a five-year period of no rate action at all. Annual trend for your PPO and medical, PPO medical and prescription claims is 8.5%. It's up slightly from where it was last year. We continue to see that go up a little bit, but we don't expect it to go up to double digits in the next couple of years. The additional premium that we've calculated for the PPO plan and the high deductible plan is about 723,000 that is needed for this year. So total projected claims, which include all of your fixed costs, and if you recall from last year, you also are responsible for certain taxes under the Affordable Care Act. That's also included in these projections. And we need an estimated premium of $9,822,000. Your claims this past year trended higher than normal at 12.3%. This was partly due to some high-cost claimants that you had in this past year that was higher than what we've typically seen in your experience. So a lot of those claims went over your stop-loss protection, but it did have something to do with the way the claims were trending overall. There was nothing outstanding in the way that your claims were running, nothing was really higher than the other, it was just a combination of utilization and higher claims for those individuals. So again, I mentioned the plan this year will remain grandfathered for 2014. The high deductible health plan with the health savings account is really not credible enough to rate on its own because of the five individuals, so it's really combined with your PPO. But for purposes of moving forward, we are suggesting that we leave those rates to that plan alone and do not increase them at all, or not increase them the same level that we're increasing the PPO plan. Both the HMO Illinois and the Blue Advantage HMO cost will increase by about 4.4%. Trend for these two plans is around 6.8, almost 7%, and the additional premium that we need this year for those plans are 100. this year for those plans are $113,000. I mentioned earlier that with the fix, with the plan changes that were implemented last year, we did see a slight decrease in the claims this year, which is a result of those changes. So that was a positive. And the HMO cost in general, just across the board, not just for your district, but those costs continue to rise as Affordable Care Act comes into play, taxes come into play, and the fact that the HMO plans continue to have 100% benefit with very little member co-pay or co-insurance, we continue to see those costs rise across the board, almost getting as close to the numbers for the PPO plan. A portion of that has to do with the physician service fees that are paid to the physicians under the HMO plan. Lastly, the dental plan costs were stable this year. There will be no rate change to the dental plan for the 2014, and the estimated costs for this year are $825,000 for the dental plan. The next exhibit reflects all of your current plans, PPO, HMO Illinois, the Health Savings Account, and Blue Advantage, premium equivalent rates. That includes both the employee portion and the district portion of that rate. The blue area highlights the projected rates that we're projecting for 2014, and then the enrollment that you see broken out by each tier because you do have a three-tier structure, employee, employee plus one, and a full family. Your special switch is basically the individuals that have, your employees that have children, but their spouses are also covered under the plan, so there's a separate rate for them. And the medico, single is your Medicare single rate for your over 65. People that are on the plan, they pay the full rate that you see up there. So that's not subsidized by the district at all. Moving forward, we have some goals and objectives to reach over the next year before we hit 2015. We will continue to educate your membership on the highlights of the high deductible plan, make sure that they have enough information about that to make decisions moving forward. This past year, we worked very closely with your insurance committee meeting, members to complete an in-depth analysis of the possibility to carve out your prescription drug program from Blue Cross Blue Shield. And based on that analysis, it was our determination that you were best served by leaving your prescription drug plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield because of the rates that they were able to come back and provide. We also want to make sure that we keep the insurance committee and you as a district aware of the Cadillac tax of 2018 and the implications of that tax. So between now and then, we have another election. Things may change, but it would be remiss if we did not continue to monitor that for you, to see where you're at and how that might impact you should it take place in 2018. Also, we need to prepare for the employer pay or pay, which hits in July of 2015. We're working very closely with Chris and his team on the measurements of those employees that may be eligible for coverage in 2015. And then the last thing is to, again, keep awareness of what's going on with the proposed changes and ever-changing Affordable Care Act as it's rolled out. Are there any questions? Yes.
Could you explain what the employer pay or play or pay is?
Sure. So under the Affordable Care Act, part of the provision says that employers must provide coverage to all full-time employees that work an average of 30 hours or more. So like a school, like school districts, you have many people that may average that over a period of time but are not considered a full-time employee. Part-time teachers, substitutes, bus drivers, those type of classifications. So employers are required to measure that period of time that those individuals work to determine if they're eligible for coverage in 2015. So it's an ongoing measurement period that you as an employer, the district administration, has to continue monitoring year after year. So in essence, what could happen is you could have a substitute teacher that works during that measurement period, averages 30 hours, and becomes eligible for coverage, still works for the district, but then in that next measurement period does not have enough hours to be eligible. But they're still eligible for coverage from the prior measurement period. So that law is really says provide more coverage and cover more people. And that's really the employer pay or play. If you do not do that and cover those individuals, you are subject to a penalty. Any other questions?
I have a few.
Okay.
Go ahead, Shannon.
The Affordable Care Act, what are some of the fees involved that we have been discussing?
Yep. So starting last year, beginning last year, and it was in our projections, under the PPO plan, the projected taxes this year are around $52,000, and there are two taxes for that. The first one is referred to as the PCORI, or Patient Centered for Outcome Research Institute. It is a fee that is a per-covered life fee. It's, it was $1 last year, it's $2 this year. The other fee is called the transitional reinsurance fee, and that fee last year was $63 per covered life. This year, it's $44. That's a three-year tax, and the PCORI is a six-year tax. So for your PPO plan, that's about less than a half, less than a point on your overall fixed cost at $53,000, and on your HMO, it's slightly higher at 1.4% of your total fixed cost. So that's going to cost you around $54,000, a little over $100,000 total for both plans for taxes in 2014.
How are those, who's paying for those taxes? How are those split?
Those are actually into the projections that we are showing you. So we, we put that in as far, as part of the fixed cost. So the premium equivalents that you see include those taxes. You as an employer are responsible to pay those taxes, but they are part of the premium equivalent and projections.
So when you said we're going to pay $723,000 in additional premiums this year?
That's a combination of your portion and the employees' portion.
And are those $100,000 in taxes included in that?
Yes.
723,000?
Yes. It's part of the projection.
Okay. And, and generally how, I mean, do you have an average for how that is split between employees and property taxpayers? That's 723,000 for average for the district?
As far as what the employees' percentage is?
Yeah, I mean, kind of an average, yeah.
Based on the premium, I want to say that the district actually covers higher than 80%, almost 90% of that total cost, and the employee portion is around an average of 10 to 11. Chris, is that about right? I know the lion's share of it is the district portion.
Yeah, I think on a single, it's split about 88/12.
Yeah, 88/12 on the single.
And then the family, it's, it's 72/28, somewhere in there.
So Chris, when you keep saying that our costs are rising faster than our revenues, this is one item in that list. Got it. Can you explain the Cadillac tax of 2018 and its implications on us?
Sure. So the Cadillac tax of 2018 under the Affordable Care Act is a tax that basically says to employers, if you choose to keep your plan that you have in place in 2018, and that plan by premium cost exceeds the government thresholds that they have set, then you will be taxed 40% of that differential. So for example, their threshold today is $850 for single coverage and $2,293 for full family coverage. They have not changed those thresholds since they established this in 2010. So if you're in 2012, yeah, if 2018, if your single rate was more than $850, you would be taxed on that differential at 40% times the number of single, times the number of family. And that isn't, that is a ongoing tax after 2018.
And do you know what its financial impact on us would be?
It's to help, it's how, it's, it's used to help support the Affordable Care Act and the carriers that are covering the uninsured.
And what, what is the projected impact on our district should we?
Well, actually, we're looking at that at our meeting on Thursday. What we've done is now that we've established rates for the 2014 plan year, we have a predictive model that we can use to say, okay, if we put, start with these rates in 2014 and we use an actuarial trend of 7%, when will you hit that threshold and what will it look like in 2018? And then, once we've identified that, what do we do between now and then to mitigate or offset hitting that tax?
The clarifying question is, when you say that we are discussing it, is it with the insurance committee?
Insurance committee, yes. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Right. So that's what we're really working at right now, now that we've got the rates established for 2014, and we're going to look at it moving forward. Because the key is now is when will you hit the threshold? It's inevitable that every employer will pay the tax. It's a matter of when and how much.
The other clarifying question is, what elements are you talking about from an impact when you're talking about?
How much that tax will be. How much that tax will be to the district. And as a self-funded employer, you may either pay that tax without passing it on to your members, or you may include it as part of your premium equivalent and pass it on to the, to the member. Under a fully insured arrangement where you're just paying a premium to the carrier, that's automatically part of your rate.
Right. So are you talking to, or are, like, what are other districts doing? Are there other options? You know what I'm saying?
Well, the key to lowering or reducing the cost of the Cadillac tax is all based on your plan design. So many of the districts that we represent have plan designs that have very low deductibles, very low out-of-pocket expenses. And so the only way to offset that is to make plan changes. And so we price out plan changes to see what it would do to the impact of your premium equivalent to mitigate that tax as we move forward. You can't control claims as far as high-dollar claims go, but you can control the type of plan that you're offering. So getting back to your question, the government said if you would like to, to offer that type of a plan, which in their mind is a richer plan compared to what they propose as a minimum value, you may do that, but we'll tax you for that.
I mean, I, I can't speak for the board, but a 40% tax seems a little steep.
On the, on the differential.
So would that, if that tax were in effect today, would we be paying a tax?
No, not today. You will not, you have not hit the threshold yet. That's why we're starting with these rates to move forward to see what that predictive modeling will tell us.
All right. That's good news.
Yes.
I appreciate that. Sure, absolutely, Karen.
For the same concept. Really what you would want, both for an employee and employer standpoint is, may I say it out loud, that it stays within the district for the employer employee and not pay that additional tax.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Correct.
Then I just, Margaret, go, go ahead. I just have one more question. You say we're grandfathered.
Yes.
Could you explain what that means?
Yes. Under the Affordable Care Act, employers that choose not to change their plan, making plan design changes, contribution percentage changes, as of March 23, 2010, that's the look-back period, could remain grandfathered, which exempted you from having to implement some of the benefit mandates that are required to groups that lose their grandfathered status. For example, wellness benefits would have to be covered at 100%, no cost sharing by the member, and there are enhanced services that have been outlined by, under the Affordable Care Act. Also covering clinical research, diagnostic testing for somebody who might be eligible for a clinical trial for a certain diagnosis, you would be responsible for covering all the preoperative testing for that individual at no cost sharing to the member. So there's certain benefits that you would have to adhere to. More recently, as a grandfathered plan, you do not have to adhere to the new benefit, which is maximizing and cap, and putting a cap on the out-of-pocket expenses that your members have in deductibles, co-insurance, and prescription, and medical copays. So that was something that we discussed with the insurance committee this last go-around to avoid having to do that, which would require a change, but it's something that we have to think about moving forward in 2015. So those are the type of benefits that you're exempt from as a grandfathered plan.
Thank you. Margaret, thank you for, let me get that in. All yours.
Just one question. You mentioned that you thought that it was inevitable that every employer would pay this Cadillac tax. Can you expand on why you think that is inevitable?
Well, the Cadillac tax, the way that it's set up is that if you keep in mind the objective of the Affordable Care Act, to provide more coverage and cover more people, you can keep your plan, but you need to do these things, is, is a cost to every employer that offers healthcare coverage to their employees. So the way that it's set up with the lower, low thresholds is to force employers that have very rich plans to make plan changes or be taxed. So eventually, if you don't do anything as an employer group and your rates go up 7% annually, you will hit that tax. It's a matter of when and how much.
Okay. So the, and this, and I think I heard you say there, if you don't do anything, you will be taxed. And I think you mentioned that there were employers that were doing and making changes?
Yes.
To avoid that tax? Okay.
Correct. We represent over 30 school districts, and every single one of our school districts is aware of this, and they, they see where they're at with the threshold, and they try to understand what they need to do because they don't want to pay that tax. We have some very large districts that are looking at, you know, a million dollars by 2018 if they do nothing at all. So it could be a very large number for some districts, and our whole idea and goal for them and for you is to make sure that you know when you, when you'll hit it and how much it will cost you if you do hit it after 2018.
One of the services you're providing us also, how to design a plan that doesn't have to pay that tax?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Or take your current plan and modify it, whether it be by deductibles, out-of-pockets, copays, whatever, so that by making those plan changes, it does reduce the, the premium by doing that. So, and it also changes behavior of your employees. The health savings account is a good example because this tax will impact every single one of your plans. So you may have a Cadillac tax on your PPO plan, but nothing on your high deductible health plan or HSA plan because the, the rate of that plan is at a lower number than that threshold is set. Now unless they change the, the threshold numbers between now and then is a different story, but they haven't changed them so far. They are indexed for CPI after 2019.
That doesn't sound like that helps a lot.
No.
All right. Karen, go ahead.
And we're doing communications, not only just with the insurance committee, but to our employees as well.
Well, our first start is with the committee on Thursday this week to do a presentation, actually, to explain the Cadillac tax and then look at the impact with our predictive modeling with your rates. And then get their questions, and then start talking about, well, what do we need to do? And then if it requires going out and educating the employees, then we will certainly do that. I think that's part of the key, is we educate the employees on the high deductible plan because we're all in it together. You have employee contributions, and you have the district contributions, and it's your plan, it's self-funded, and everyone has to have a little bit of, you know, input on how we keep those costs down.
Emily?
Since a lot of the discussions are happening at the insurance committee level, can you remind me who makes up this committee? Is it administrators and teachers or?
You want me to answer that?
Yes.
It's, it's every, from every association that you have. So you've got teachers, you've got every classification that's there, yeah. And, and they're very collaborative. We've worked with them now for three years. It's been a great, they work well together. They collaborate, they share ideas, they ask great questions. So I think the goal and their objective is for the good of the plan, and they've been very cohesive in making sure that when we make these decisions that they're supportive of them. So the Cadillac tax meeting this Thursday will be a new start for the 2014-15 plan year. Yes.
You said organizations, you mean the labor organizations. It's established by the collective bargaining agreements?
Yes.
Okay. Are they separate committees or a single committee with, with representation?
Single committee.
Bargaining units?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
The next item on the agenda is discretionary capital projects, and that was in your packet. Let me go through these with a brief explanation. First of all, these projects were developed through not only working with Chris and maintenance and operation, but also talking with staff, teachers, support staff, getting input, district leadership team weighed in on what they thought the priorities were for discretionary staffing on capital improvements. If you remember, the Board of Education approved approximately $500,000 of one-time funding to address some of the capital needs that the district had across the district. So I went back to our stakeholders, asked for their input, put together a list, and this is a reflection of the list, that we are recommending that the board look at tonight. As you see, the list does not add up to $500,000. We want to, after tonight, depending on the discussion we have tonight with the board, go back and look at some other items or look at where we can use the rest of the funding in the overall budget. But these would be the priorities that we see that we would like to start to move forward on. Some of these are dependent on approval from the board so we can get these started in the summer. Some of these have a little more leeway time to put into effect. So the first one is video surveillance. The Safety and Security Committee has been working very diligently on the overall safety and security of our school buildings, and we have made a number of changes in the district over the last year and a half, two years, related to safety and security. This is another piece of that, and it's the recommendation that we install more video surveillance cameras at key vantage points in our school district, obviously for safety and security needs. This has been recommended by our resource officers from the Almhurst Police Department, and they feel that with the remote access and with the proper cameras, we can enhance our security, especially in crisis situations across the district should that ever occur. And so that cost is approximately $60,000. The other issue we have is, as you know, last year we changed a lot of the entryways in our buildings, and that was an in-house project that we did last year, to a number of our buildings that we lend itself to adding added security doors to the entryways of our buildings. This one was a bigger project. We couldn't finish it last year, we couldn't start it last year, but we won consideration for $30,000 to put in an application of secondary walls and doors at York High School at the entryway to York. And if you can envision York, you have the entryway as you walk in, but before you get to the hallway and the cafeteria, we would put in a secondary door that would be secure so that you would be admitted to one door, but not into the second door without being cleared by security. So it's an added security measure to add to that building. The third one is card access readers on two of our buildings at Field and at Emerson. Right now, they are entryways out to playground areas, and a lot of times, they are not key, card keyed access, and they tend to be propped open for playground activity, they tend to be left open, and the card keyed readers would allow teachers to go in and out, but then swipe them with the cards. It makes those two buildings much more secure in those areas that are not the main entrance, but playground entryway. The next one is window air conditioning units, and this one, we're estimating at $25,000. But we'd like to, at this one, explore with the PTAs whether they would be willing to fund part of this. The air conditionings were originally bought in these buildings by the PTAs at the time. And now they are getting to the end of their life, and they need to be replaced. We would like to at least explore with some of the PTAs whether this could be a fundraising project for them to continue to fund the air conditionings at those buildings, and that's Madison, Jackson, Jefferson, and Lincoln. This one is not urgent. Those air conditionings are still working, but they are getting to the end of their usefulness, and it's time to look at those as replacements. But we would like to explore that with our PTAs, just to free up more funding for some other projects. This kind of is the same way with the Madison Playground. Madison Playground, as you know, is an early childhood center with a lot of at-risk students at that center, and we have some playground needs, especially related to ADA requirements and State Board of Education requirements when it comes to playground access for handicapped students. And we are not currently ADA compliant with that playground. The PTA there has been raising funds to redo that playground, and we would like to continue looking at other options for fundraising in the community. We think this would be a great community project for service organizations that are really looking for a way to donate to the school district. This could be a great project to support. And so the Madison, as you see, has already donated $25,000 toward that endeavor. So that $140,000, you can take off 25 for that, but we think there's more potential to this. We've had, you know, Home Depot and other organizations who have helped us with some of the projects across the district, and we think this would be a real great project because it does affect all the kids, most of the kids in the district. This is a center program for all three- and four-year-olds that would lend itself to that. And finally, the last one is a reintroduction of approximately $60,000 to the district's media centers. And this was a cut that was done through Ebert quite a few years ago, four or five years ago now. This has never been reinstated. This is only a recommendation for one time, but this is a result of the original Ebert cut. We have never restored that. And right now, across the district, the libraries and media centers are dealing with dividing up $60,000. This would give them another $60,000 to raise it to $120,000. The other need here is nonfictional textbooks. With the new core curriculum, with the emphasis on non-tech, nonfictional reading and writing, we think this is an important project to add to the curriculum project across the district. And teachers have been, in my meetings with teachers, have really said that they would like a lot more choices in nonfictional materials with the emphasis. This would be $60,000 for the libraries to start looking at nonfictional materials, both in the classrooms and in their media centers. So overall, the total is $320,000. That's a little false, depending on where we go with some of the fundraising activities, but we wanted the board to have that this evening, talk about the projects, especially ones that are timed. And those are probably the video cameras and the card access readers and the York Vestabule to get that started this evening.
John?
I'm curious how the last item is considered a capital expense?
It's not really a capital expense, but it falls under the board's parameter of one-time funding.
Okay, all right.
So it's a one-time purchase.
And why don't I point this out? I mean, I, my impression of this, of this money that we came up with was to improve education within the district. I just liked everybody's opinion on, you know, on these projects and how they fit that goal. Shannon?
I just wanted to preface it, too. With our last curriculum meeting, we talked about the potential to buy a data warehouse. And originally, we talked about this sum of money being used to purchase a data warehouse, but it seems, the way things are going, that if we move forward with the data warehouse, it could be purchased with curriculum and instruction funds. So that, that's why it's taken off of this list. So it's kind of opened up more options for us with the $500,000 one-time expenditures.
Emily?
I have questions about the video surveillance. So is the $60,000 in the amount you're talking about, is that enough for all of the video cameras that we need in the district? Is that just kind of a first wave? If so, how would you decide where to put them? Would it be spread equally?
We, we met with the, with the facility department, and we looked at every building. It's enough to put two or three cameras, I would say, at the elementary level, maybe three to five at the middle school. We already have 30 to 40 now at York. And so I wouldn't say that this, you know, at two to three in the elementary and maybe three to four at the middle school, it doesn't cover the entire building. We tried to pick key locations. Every main entrance will have a, that's the most important spot. So every main entrance will have it, and most secondary entrances in every building will have a camera. And then, and then maybe a key location beyond that. But we tried to find the most critical areas in every building, too. But it, but it doesn't cover everything, obviously, but, but we're trying to do as much as we can and try to hit the critical spots.
Chris?
So Chris, these first three items, I'm trying to square this with the life safety plan that we have. Were they not on that plan? I mean, I think we've seen these before, haven't we? I mean, we've been asking our PTAs in certain circumstances to help fund. That was one of the things on their list, video cameras, right? Because I remember having a couple of PTA questions asking me about what we were doing with them.
Yes, I believe this was on the PTA's list. We have not received any funding from the PTAs related to video surveillance cameras.
Right. And, and in the last, in the last version of the potential capital plans for the summer, you guys did some great work on grants. And has there been grants pursued for this under?
Yes.
Some of the kind of programs?
We did an extensive application for the grant with the IEEMA. Put a lot of work into it, but we did not receive that grant.
Okay. But, and I guess I should back up and say, these fit life safety? Do they fit into that bucket?
They're not in the current state-approved life safety plan. No.
So you couldn't include them in a life safety plan if you wanted to fund it through that?
I don't think so.
All right, we can talk about, about that.
I don't believe these were on the list for life safety that were approved under the life safety plan.
Okay. One, one issue with Madison, just from a timing perspective. We're talking with the city about how to share some of our land there with them for flood and water retention, which may reconfigure some things. We're also in the middle of a long-term facility plan in that building. It's one of our fastest-growing enrollment buildings, and we've looked at kind of what we would need to do if we needed to add space to that building, which would build right over the top of that playground. And I would hate to waste $140,000 and tear it all out and then try to build it again. So I think we do need to make sure that we have our planning in place. My point is, is that it's a great idea. I think that we need to get our planning in place before we put any shovels in the ground on it. One, to figure out how that partnership with the city is going to work out and where that's going to go. And two, depending on what our future needs are at that building, we may want to move the playground that we have before we spend any more money on it, depending on where it might go. So I think there's a couple of gates there. I just want to caution everybody before we run down the road and try to spend money on that, that it's, you know, not saying that it's not a worthy cause to focus on, I'm just saying that we want to make sure that it's a lot of money and that we spend it wisely. And I guess the last piece, you asked a question about generating innovation, or generate, improving education in Almhurst, thank you. And, you know, some of these, I just think, believe on a regular cap, belong on a regular CapEx budget. I mean, it's what we should be doing. I don't know that, outside of potentially the last one here, and there's some questions about, I would love to understand more about the last one, just because five years from now, I'm not sure whether you're going to have physical books. And so how does that integrate with kind of where things are going if we're going to spend $60,000 on text? But outside of that, as far as enhancing education in Almhurst, I'm not sure that these, these are at the top of that list. Not that they shouldn't belong somewhere in our budget, but that's my two cents.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'd add, well, here, let me take, wait a second, let me take these item by item. And it sounds like if we're going to try to raise private money to supplement for the early, the Madison Early Childhood Playground, we do have a lead time as we work with the city and plan for what our future needs on that site would be. And we're not talking about, are we talking about reusing any part of the existing playground?
Yes, we are. I think in order to be ADA compliant, what Frank is saying is, it needs to lower. A lot of the things are too high for the children, so.
Got it. So we can reuse some of the stuff that's there? We're not talking about entirely new, entirely new equipment?
We are reusing.
It's adapting what we already have.
Right. And adding to it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like we have some lead time there to make sure that, that we're not adapting it, installing it, and then saying, all right, now we have to move it. It sounds like we have lead time there, especially as we try to raise private money to supplement the public money that's in here.
I think it's important to remember that you want to not only add to it, but you want to adapt it, because what we don't want to do is create two separate playgrounds.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes. Yeah, I mean, we just want to make sure we do it once and do it right. The window and air conditioning units, what about proposing to the PTAs we have a matching fund program? What do we think about that? I mean, because I certainly can support window air conditioning units that make the learning environment more comfortable and more conducive to learning as, certainly, an enhancement, especially if it's going away as these things break. But our PTAs have told us they're looking for guidance as to what they can raise money and contribute for. I know we've had a lot of, of difficulty with technology, and this is something that seems to fit that bill pretty nicely, at least for, for the four schools that are listed here. Do we think a matching program would motivate some funds to be raised? I mean, what does the administration, what does the board think about that? Shannon?
For the PTA, we can ask them, although they're going to spend the money that they raised this year, and so it'll be, next year will be the fundraising year, and then it'll be a year from now before you would have money for the units. So if you're, they're thinking they need this for the fall, then that doesn't match up.
No, I think in the explanation here, these units are still working, they're just at the end of their lives.
Okay, so it's just.
So it's not, it's not like we have got a bunch of broken ones that are time-critical.
Okay. And then that could work with timing.
Is that a reasonable plan to, maybe come up with a matching program to supplement some private money with public money and stretch the public money? Does that seem reasonable? Sure.
Can I ask a bigger-picture question if we're going to get into the details? Okay. Okay, so we've been talking about, for many meetings now, there's the $400,000 and the $500,000. One's a one-time, one is a cost that's three years. And it's to pilot things, to improve education, and see if we can, you know, start some innovation and move it through and, and help address some of the needs. We have seen, you know, many different iterations. So are we, can we clarify first that this is, this is from everyone, and this is like the final one-time recommendation based on what we've seen in the past? And then this discussion is the three-year allocation separate? I just want to clarify for everyone, because it can be confusing. So I, big picture, and then if we want to get into the detail.
Right. And I don't want any surprises down the road, so that's why I'm bringing up this discussion. I want to, I want to make sure that we're all behind these proposals, and, you know, if there's dissent on any of them, let's. And, you know, if, if there's dissent on any of them, let's, let's bring it up now, because let's not waste people's time talking about them and planning for them and then saying later, you know what, this, this didn't exactly meet our, our intention.
So with that said, there's two items that I'm wondering, would they really be on this, on this sheet? One of which is, I think it was a last board meeting where David Smith was presenting the recommendation for extending the pilot for mobile learning initiative. And he pulled some of his one-time capital, if you will, costs back, because we wanted more employees, because we have heard from, not only here at the presentation from Niles, but additional districts, that you shouldn't lead with the technology, you should lead with the people in the classroom. And what is that need? So I want to make sure that we're thinking about this holistically to say, maybe we should pull some of that equipment. I'm just asking some questions that I guess, before we get into deciding, you know, each one of these, how does it fit in with we all, meaning the board, the administration, the community, the, the employees, all said we want to move forward with this mobile initiative? And so if we're going to prioritize and say, let's move forward with this, we can't get out to all the students at first anyway, but how can we then start focusing and make decisions based on that focused effort, so that we can be productive, successful, and then expand it to all of our students and all of our employees? And help with some of the needs that they have been telling us about, like differentiation and class size and technology and those sorts of things? I just.
Margaret?
And sitting back and looking at this list, I think the challenging piece, and I, I know other people have brought this up before, the challenging part is we're trying to balance and recognizing that we have limited funds. We need to make sure we plan and manage for the future, but then there are some really critical things that are just needed right away. So when I look at some of this list, the card access readers at Emerson and Field, to me, those, that is, that's an immediate need. The idea that doors are being propped open so people can get in and out, that, you know, that to me is a challenge. That's an immediate need. And, and for me, that is a, while it doesn't talk about innovation, it talks about safety and safety for our students. So I, I, I find it, it's challenging, and maybe there's another way, and I think that's what we're all trying to figure out, maybe there's another way to get some of these very critical things that have to occur, that need to occur. But these things are critical. When I go down to, I know we talked about, we had time for the Madison Early Childhood Playground, but my understanding on one of the reasons that we were doing this is that we had students already there currently who couldn't access the playground. So while we have time to fund that, we have a current need that some students, and maybe I miss, I miss speaking here, but some students currently can't use a playground. So we have to try to figure out a way to, in my opinion, get some of these things done while planning for the future, such as our technology and all those other things that we need to be put in place. But these are somewhat, for me, these are somewhat gut-wrenching that we don't have these in place already. So I'm going back to, we can't do future if we don't have some basics in place. And how do we try to do a little bit of both?
Yeah, I'm, let's just ferret out all the issues and then let's break it down and discuss them and reach a consensus, so that the administration is clear on where we stand and, and can move forward. And, and so that's the point of the discussion right now. So Shannon?
Yeah, I agree with you, Margaret. There, the top three items seem immediate, very immediate. Although, I mean, all of them are very important, it's just how do you do it all? But along, going along with what Karen is saying, you know, maybe the 500,000, you, to, to have some of it be for the future, building, you know, our, to integrate technology with curriculum, is there, you know, technology infrastructure that needs to be done? Is there any training, especially for principals, as we're going to start integrating technology? I mean, they would be the, the building leaders. So are there, those are one-time events, some professional development or training or infrastructure to start the steps, to our instructional coaches, the Chromebook carts, and, you know, our future? So maybe the, the list can be, you know, I, I agree with what you're saying, immediate and then building, building our future too.
So let's, we have a few issues on, on the table here. So let's, let's take as a package the first three items, the video surveillance, the York Safety Vestibule, and the card access readers. Margaret, I agree, our, our kids need to be safe first and foremost. If we don't have the money in other budgets to do so, and that's, I think that's the key question here. I mean, I, I personally, to speak, and for me, I, I, I think those are our three very worthwhile projects, the top three. Now, the question is, I mean, should that money be coming from somewhere else? Is that money available somewhere else? Chris?
I mean, I guess I go back to our capital, I mean, there's a litany of maintenance CapEx that's in there. I mean, I'll just throw something else. I mean, it's hard to do this in isolation. And there are little things, which is just like ongoing, card reader access for five grand. I mean, that, that's something that impact versus cost would, would seem to me that would be a no-brainer. But the, but the first two, let me throw something else. I mean, how would you feel if this list contained a new parking lot at Churchville? Or fixing the parking lot at Churchville? Or, I mean, pick, there are many needs on our maintenance list. And, and you could pull one off of that and put one of these into that slot, which means something else would be there. So I'm just saying, you have to do it in the context. I would love to revisit the entire maintenance CapEx list with these and understanding the priorities where these are, and seeing where that fits with that budget. And maybe there's some items on that, to your point, maybe there's some items on that list that can be pushed out and these can be slotted into.
I think the only, my only suggestion, and I don't disagree, I think if you want to, you can go back to your main, these are not on any list that I have seen. The reason this got on the list is because we have no source of funding for this. And I think personally, safety and security is a top priority that we need to address. I don't know where else we can put this and where we should reorganize. I personally, as bad as the Churchville parking lot is, I would not trade it for video surveillance and safety vestibules. I, I'm sorry, I think this is a bigger priority than those. Now, and we can have that discussion and maybe, you know, people don't totally agree with that. But I think when, when the safety committee comes back and resource officers come back and say, really need to beef up your video surveillance for the safety and security, I have trouble arguing with that. And I don't know, and I have not been in on the meetings, and Chris well in the house, so maybe I missed.
And I agree, and those should go on the list. I know last year we did some elementary vestibules, and, and that is a program that we have talked about. And, and in the context of the overall safety and security of the district, we have a plan that we're starting to talk about. Maybe it needs to be bigger, and maybe these should be discussed in that context, and maybe they're at the top of that list. All I'm saying is, is that we should discuss these in the context of all the safety and security things, and I would love to have that conversation, seeing that these have bubbled up. But I just think, sitting right here right now, I'm not, I, I can't tell you. I mean, I think they're, could I guess that they would be at the top of this? Probably. But I think we should go through the process. And that's all I'm saying, as it comes to the first three.
All right. So, so, all right, first of all, and does the board want to go through that process? Does the board just want to move these into the slot where we take from this, these funds to fund these? And if we move into the process, how long does that take? And describe that process.
Well, I, and there, there are a series of capital spend that's coming to the board. Some of it came last board meeting. I don't know if there's any on here now. As you get into summer, I think, I'm not sure if Frank has all of his summer projects in there yet, or he's going to bid on them. So I, I, I mean, that would be a question as to how much lead time do we have to put these in? You know, i- if you went there. But, I mean, I guess this would be something where if we were going to do this, it would, I would put it in the capital budget, and I would just move these funds over to that capital budget and, and do it out of that, because I think that's where that belongs.
And, and that's fine. I mean, classifying these funds, I mean, if you want to say, look, fine, let's just take some of these funds, move over to the capital budget, find it over, I mean, that's, to me, a little bit of semantics.
It is, but once you put it in the capital budget, then you look through that capital budget, and just make sure that everything on that list that we're deferring is of an equal, again, I'm not trying to make a value judgment, sitting right here today, I just don't know what else was on that list. Right, I can't recall it off the top of my head. I would love to have an opportunity to have that conversation.
So if we were to do that, how long does that process take? What, what does the turnaround look like?
Chris, can we, would it make, would it make it to the budget, or would it make it to the next agenda next week?
See, the way I recall this happening, we had the tentative budget in August, and then between the tentative budget in August and the final budget in September, the board said we would like to put, to add to the final budget a $500,000 budget allocation for one-time, non-recurring expenses, and then directed the administration to prioritize and put together a list. So this 500,000 is in the current budget. And then from that, they've went and got feedback from the staff, and this is the list that they put together. The long-term facility planning is something that's ongoing, that, that the finance committee talks about regularly a few times. The, in, in November, December, they, we approved the projects to, to occur this summer, and Frank has been bidding those out the last few months. And, and the summer projects are, are really well into the planning stages. We, the, if the Madison project was approved, it couldn't be done this summer, because it, you know, the, we've already been bidding all the summer stuff already for this, this summer. That would, I mean, we would, that would maybe be able to be done in the fall if, if we chose to do it in that, that timeframe.
Of the first three projects on the list, the video surveillance, the York Safety Vestibule, and the card readers, could they be done? What kind of timeframe could they be done in?
Yes. We, if, if they were approved, we could definitely get those in, in the summer, definitely.
Okay. Now, to go through, you know, just allocate these funds to the capital budgeting, make sure that these are at the top of, of any priority of the capital budget, how long? Is, is that a trip to the finance committee and back? Or how would that work?
We do have on the, the, the finance committee's meeting a week from today, May 20th, and we do plan to look at long-term, the long-term facility plan, and we were planning to target, to take a close look at projects for next summer, the summer of 2015, and, and the funding for those projects and the funding for capital projects, because we really won't have, the way, the way it's planned now is that we won't have any funds left in the life safety fund or the capital projects fund after this summer's projects are completed. And then after that, the plan would be to start looking at when the TIF1 surplus distributions would start coming between, in January of 16 is really the, the bigger, the, the first bigger projected surplus distribution in 2021. So that's the discussion planned for May 20th, Finance Committee.
But, but, and the point is, we have a list of 20-some-odd million dollars worth of needs that we're moving around. These are of those kinds of ilk. And the question is, is if you threw $100,000 at that list, would these be the three that you funded off of that list? And I don't know.
Right, I, I understand that.
Shouldn't we ask that question before we approve these? That's, that's all I'm.
Yes, and the other, the other half of that question is, and at what cost in terms of time? So I'm just asking, if we were to put these three projects on that $21 million worth of, worth of needs, and ask the question, where do they fall? And if they, if the determination were that they fall at the top of the list and we should move forward with them as soon as possible, what timeframe does as soon as possible meet? That's, that's all I'm asking.
Chris, if you did it on the 20th, and we came back at the board meeting on the 27th? If the board thinks it's worthwhile, if it's not, then that's fine. I just have one.
Right, yeah. So John, you have a?
For some reason, these three safety items bubbled to the top in this available money. And 500,000 is there, only 320,000 on this list, there's still 100 and, thank you, 180 left on. Thank you, I appreciate that. The list itself seems rather ad hoc, but those three stand out because the administration seemed to say these are safety concerns that need to be addressed right away. I'm more than happy to have those three, get them done. It's kids' safety, don't hesitate. The administration made a determination, there's a need there, and I'm with it 100%. The rest, I'd be inclined to look at it in that other process he's doing. I don't know if that's, you know.
And I'm trying to confine this discussion so that we can reach a consensus as to what direction we're moving, that this particular discussion, just the top three items on this list. Emily, please.
I mean, I'm happy to say to move forward tonight, because I feel like we asked the administration to go and see what bubbles to the top, see what's most important. They did that, and they're saying this is what's most important. So now, I mean, I'm comfortable saying, okay, and approving those top three, and not saying we need to go do the process that we just asked you to do and to recommend us.
Margaret?
And, and I, I am in complete agreement with Emily. I think what I, what I heard was, I heard there's some future and there's some immediate that needs to be done. And there's some type of, of, of balance that we need to keep. And I don't know if it's 50/50 or 320 and 180, I don't know. But there's some type of balance, and I think that's a discussion that we, as a board, need to have. Now, to contrast that with the specific details, and help me go through the process, I think I heard of a few different groups that were polled, for lack of a better word, a few different groups that were polled to help get to this list. And I heard DLT, I heard the facility, was it the, whoever is part of, of safety and security, so.
Administration.
Administration. Okay, so there's been a few different groups that have been involved in pulling together this list. So I guess I'm saying, I think as a, as a board, our discussion should be more, if we want to balance, what that balance is. So does that mean it's the full 320 that we would say can go, because to me, these are immediate needs? Is that full 320 that goes to the immediate needs, and then we would have this 180 that would help us balance those future innovations? Or is it something less? Or something more? Is it something less than 320? And then that's where we get into the idea of, could the PTA help?
And, and, and this is, this is what we're, what the process I'm trying to go through here, exactly, Margaret, is, is talking about just these first three items, then we can talk about the rest of the items on this list. And, and I mean, I, I commend the administration for, for not coming up with everything that, that they could possibly think of to spend $500,000, that they're coming back that's saying that this is our top priorities. It happens to add up to 320,000. And, you know, in school districts, there are plenty of priorities to spend money. So, so, you know, that money will still be there. But I'm, I'm just trying to confine our discussion to figure out, to gain consensus item by item on this, so the administration is clear on what they're to move forward on.
And I guess that is my difference, is that I don't necessarily want to go item by item. And I guess that is my difference, is that I don't necessarily want to go item by item. My thought here is that if these six items were selected and there is a process on how these six items got selected, then our overall discussion should be, is this the right dollar amount that we're looking at? Or no, this is not the right dollar amount, that we want something less and find a way to make this less. But keep true to the process where you had all of these three different groups that brought these items to us. So that is, so that's why I'm saying, going through and saying yes to, you know, safety, okay? And hold on the fourth item or hold on the fifth item. I'm not sure that we have all the rationale behind how and why these items were selected.
So you would rather discuss the dollar amount?
I would rather discuss the collective dollar amount. Because what I heard pushback was, we want a balance. Does this fit the needs or fit our educational needs? So that's where I heard the discussion on, does this fit our educational needs? Okay, and then I thought I heard discussion that this is immediate, but there's some future things that we'd like to have some money set aside for. Okay, there's some future things such as technology. Okay, so then, if that's the case, if that's the direction that we want to go, then let's say that's the direction, and I recognize that is a slight change and I appreciate the Cabinet being very. There's still some left up, right, but I appreciate the graciousness of letting us discuss this and figure out, okay, it's not really item by item that we want to go through. Instead, it's a general direction that says, we want to dedicate more dollars or $180,000, $180,000 of what's left to this future. The 320, you identified these were the right six items. You've gone through the different process and the different motion. We will agree with that process, whatever that dollar amount is, we will agree with that. And we'll want you to come back and do the same thing to save that remaining sum of money. What are some of those future things that will help position us for education?
So, just so I'm clear, because I have to say, I'm a little confused is what you're asking. So, there are some opportunities on this list to raise private money to supplement the public money that we're spending here that could stretch the public money and make it go further. What I hear you saying, and please correct me if I have a misconception, is you would prefer to say, here's the dollar amount that we approve, you divide it among these projects the way you see fit.
Well, no, I mean, absolutely. That is, that's exactly what I'm saying. I'm saying, and I'm saying, yes, stretch the public money. So instead of 320, maybe it comes out to be, I'm making up the random, 250. I divided it even. Maybe it turns out to be 250. And we say, okay, there's 250. You identified six key items. You find a way to either make these six key items work or find either grant money or some other avenue to get in there. But these are the items that you identified and we trust the process that you put in place. What we're also saying is, we want additional money to come up for these future innovative ideas that'll help support education. That is the proposal that I am stating.
Okay, and let's contrast that to the process that I initially started to, that we go through the first three items as a group and we give the administration a clear nod, yes or no, that we support those. Then we go through, and the only reason I'm separating it is because there's different opportunities to fund them. I'll take the window air conditioners as a separate part. And my suggestion, as one of seven, would be that we ask the administration to go to the PTAs and say, we have a matching program. We'll match you dollar for dollar for every money you raise. And therefore, we are able then, if that is successful and if the PTAs think that's a worthwhile project, instead of spending $25,000 of public money, we spend $12,500. And then that, then the $12,500 additional that comes from private money, you know, then increases this $180,000 that we have to reallocate for other projects. And then we go to the Madison Early Childhood and say, let's find out how much private money we can raise. And therefore, we can offset the public money and reallocate the public money, again, to increase that $180,000 balance. You know, and then finally discuss the other item and frankly, I only separate it just because it's, you know, where it is on the list for just physically placed on the list.
And that's fair. And I think we will get the same place.
I think we are, which is why I just want to compare processes so we can pick one and go for it.
Right, and I think we'll get the same place. I guess the only piece that I was objecting to is to go back and reevaluate a list. I was suggesting that we not go back and reevaluate the list. That we'll say, these are the six items that were identified. They've gone through these processes, so these are, and they've been vetted by these different groups. So this is, you know, this is a six that you said. Now, how can we stretch this dollar amount? How can we stretch it?
And that's the only reason I'm breaking them out, because there is an opportunity to stretch the dollar amount that I think is easier on a couple items than it is on others. We've already gone to the PTAs asking for security cameras and Dave, we've gotten how much from the PTAs for that? The answer is zero. So clearly going back to the PTAs is probably not going to be a fruitful exercise, which is why I separated out those three items as saying, okay, we already tried that, so let's not go back to the PTAs on those. We already know our answer.
And I guess the only challenge is, we could go to the PTAs on air conditioning and we could get the same response. So my thought is that we give administration, we say, you find a way, be very creative and find a way how to make this work. But this is what we're looking for. We're looking for, you maximize those dollars so we can put some dollars, some dollars someplace else.
And all I'm trying to do is make sure that the administration is clear on what the Board absolutely supports here, which is why I wanted to be as clear as possible. And propose, and let's use the air conditioners for an example, which were originally bought with private money raised by the PTA. So I'm hopeful that there will be a positive response there. And just so that the administration's clear on what our expectation is. And that's the only reason I'm going through them item by item. I'm not second guessing anybody. I'm just saying, if there's a creative way to stretch our money, I want to pursue it. Are we okay with that? Okay. So, first three items, we have three people who say, look, I'm good right now. Four people. All right, so we're clear, the first three items, we're clear, just move forward. So, window air conditioners, and let's make this as quick and painless as possible. Window air conditioners, do we support the idea of setting up a matching program and seeing the response that that gets from the PTAs? John?
Why the matching program? Why not just ask if they'd fund the whole thing?
I'm open to that as well.
I mean, if they're asking for suggestions of things that would really help us, that would be it. I don't, you know, matching is nice. It says to them, if you raise it, we're going to be there with you and work with you. And I'm fine with that. I'm not sure of the reasoning for cutting that in half.
Here's my thought with that. These window air conditioners currently work. I think when they start to break, you're going to be able to raise money far more easily. All I'm doing is offering the incentive of matching funds as an incentive to raise funds, okay? Because the motivation isn't there until they stop working. That's my only suggestion, just one person talking. Emily?
I don't want to be negative, but I don't see much hope that the PTAs are going to do this. Only because I was so hopeful when we went to them with the security cameras, I thought, what could be more important than the safety of the kids? And they completely ignored that. I feel like the PTAs have gone and spent money on what they want to spend money on. And especially if the principals aren't supportive of the list that we are giving to them, then they kind of just ignore it, which is what they've been doing without wishful. So I just, I don't want to be a downer, but I am very, I just don't think it's going to happen.
I'm also a little bit concerned that we're going to wait for them to break because Madison has medically fragile kids. So I just want to go on record as saying that and they need temperature control.
Okay, that's a good point about Madison. Thank you.
John?
We are actively replacing them then, and not waiting.
We're going to try and that's what I'm hoping the matching program would raise an incentive. Now frankly, Madison's already been very generous with a $25,000 donation toward the playground, frankly. John?
People want to give to their own schools and so it's going to turn out to be the PTAs in those schools and then you're asking them to do it. Why don't we just ask the PTA, what do you want to work on? What are the projects you want to work on? And make this a dialogue back and forth. If it's needed, medically fragile kids, then boom, we do it. It's just like the first three. I mean, it's a good point and that's the way I'd view it. But if there's a chance to, you know, perhaps the other, the Madison Playground is another opportunity for private money to get involved. It's the sort of thing that I would expect the PTAs are, you know, excited about because it's that sort of very visible thing that I think they enjoy participating in.
And there are, if we're kind of jumping ahead of ourselves when we're talking about the Madison Playground, but there are several organizations in this town that, whose mission is to support efforts like this. I'm just saying, let's go to those organizations and see if they would like to contribute. Right, but let's focus on the air conditioners. Let's get to the Madison Playground next. So are we in support of, I mean, I'm thinking the matching program would provide some incentive. Clearly, we're not going to put any medically fragile kids at risk. These air conditioners still work. And see what we come back with. Are we in support of that or should we just spend the $25,000 and call it a day?
I'm kind of with Emily. It's, they look at that as a maintenance cost. So just, I think we're going to do a lot of circling.
But I mean, the PTAs clearly came to us and say, please provide some leadership. Please, district, provide some leadership on what we should spend money on.
We did that.
So because, so what you're saying is, because cameras didn't work, nothing will work. Is that your generalization?
Could we, I feel like we would need to get support from the principals. Do we know how the principals of these buildings feel about it? I mean, I feel like we can't be the only ones saying, this is what our plan is. I'm not, it's worth a shot. I'm just, we need administration to agree to that too.
We can go back and discuss this with the principals involved. You know, again, the list came from a variety of stakeholders. It rose to the top. Staff said, you know, it's getting to the point where the air conditioners are not working real efficient. It's getting hot in our classrooms in June and August. Here's an opportunity to replace them. It wasn't on any list, again, that we had across the district on capital improvement. So when the Board asked for items that would address, one-time items that we saw, this got added to the list. But I don't have a problem going back to, you know, I can call the PTA presidents and say, hey, you know, we're going to try to fund some of these, but, you know, you were funded before, is there any, so helping us fund them again?
John?
If it's a maintenance item, to hit them before they break down, that's something we should just pay. That more than enough time to find out whether they want to participate in some of these other items. But on that one, it's a maintenance thing, it's not allocated evenly among schools. It raises, you know, gets into how the different PTAs do it. I think we just fund it and move to the next one.
All right, what do we think about the proposal on the table is we just fund it and move on? What do we think?
You just told them that if they didn't give it, we'd fund it, so I guess we're stuck.
Said Madison, medically fragile kids. All right, that's two for funded, three for funded, four for funded. We're funding it. Madison Early Childhood Playground.
If I could intervene on this one before we have this discussion. We are a ways, I put this one on the list because I wanted the Board to know, I view this as a need that needs to be addressed. It doesn't have to be addressed immediately and as a matter of fact, there are reasons not to because of the issues Chris brought up, which is, what are we doing with Madison? Are we reconfiguring it? We're not ready to pull the trigger on this project at all. And I would like more time to see if we could fundraise this one a little more to get it closer. So, but I didn't want, it came up in all the groups. It was a priority. I understand the priority. You have handicapped students at a very specialized center who really should have an ADA access playground. And I just wanted the Board to have that on their list, to know that even though we're not going to pull the project right now and move forward, in the very near future, we may be coming back. So as part of the planning, however the Board wants to do that, again, I was told, bring us one-time items that, you know, are priority, that's what this is. But it's not ready now. So even if the Board said, yeah, go ahead, this money's not going to be spent in the immediate future. And we would want more time to look at configuration of Madison. Is it the right location right now? Do we want to move it? And we just haven't had that opportunity to go back to Susan and her staff and look at the blueprint, look at where we're going in the future with Madison and where that playground should be. And there's a lot of questions with that playground that I'd like to investigate before we come back to the Board with a firm recommendation for the playground. But again, I just wanted to raise the awareness that it is an issue. It's part of, to me, the educational program as much as curriculum is for early childhood students because play is part of their curriculum and I just think we need to address that.
And then library media services? My personal opinion is the death of the paper textbook has been highly overrated.
Let me just say this one too. If you look, it's purchased nonfiction text and/or media materials. I am going to just, the process here, if the Board approves this, is to go back to Kathy Baker, working with the librarians and say, what kind of materials? Hardbook covers, you know, iPads, whatever it is. What is it that we can get more nonfiction text material, whatever it looks like, into the hands of teachers? With Common Core coming on and Park coming on, I just think the $60,000 is something that is needed to give the teachers the, some of the tools they need to teach the new Common Core curriculum. And this was an item that, again, hasn't been restored since Ebert. This is only one-time funding, but I think it's certainly justified in a sense of urgency with Common Core coming on.
How was the $60,000 figure arrived at?
That was the original reduction from Ebert four or five years ago. Was $60,000 was taken away from all the media centers. So I just proposed reinstate that.
So $60,000 one-time was taken away?
It was $60,000 over the last four or five years has been taken away.
Oh, in total over the last four or five years?
No, $60,000 each year.
Oh, each year. So all you're proposing, we restore one year of what was taken away?
One time and then we look at, we may have to look at it again in the following year. But I'm not overreaching here. I'm just asking for one-time funding, Common Core textbooks.
Actually, where I was going is, is that enough? So I just want to know how. It doesn't seem like a ton.
Well, again, though, you know, you've got Dave's tech plan and all of that. This is just to get material in their hands, give us time to look at the whole, the Common Core, nonfiction text, other material related to the Common Core and then come back. But this would be for next year, I think, an immediate help, again, to the teachers in the classroom and the buildings to start addressing some of the nonfiction material issues that we seem to be lacking across the district.
Any discussion on that? We're all good? John?
I like the idea, but it is qualitatively different than everything else we're seeing here. It sounds like it's just a stopgap and that there's a deeper need because, you know, to meet these Common Core standards. And the whole thing to do with this, we talked about it in the three-year fund, was to do things that are going to last or to get more bang out of having three years. I mean, this. more bang out of having three years. I mean, this actually seems like it should be something that's funded out of the other one rather than, than this one. But I don't want to complicate things if everybody's coalescing around that solution, a yes on that. I'm, I'm with that.
My impression of this is this is a one-time thing, and then the administration will discuss putting in their budget proposal to the board in the future. Karen?
Just a question of clarification. Dave Smith, wasn't this something that Kathy Baker was talking about with the instructional coaches, too? Isn't there a linkage there?
I don't think that linkage has been fully developed because it's so, we haven't really gotten that far down the pike. But she works with the librarians on this, on this issue, and they did take a big hit, the whole library area. And Ebert took a major hit, and as Dave said, hasn't really been restored in an annual budget. So I think, working with the librarians, I think this is something she, I mean, I think there's, there is a relation, but I don't think it's really been fully established yet because we don't have that, that new position in place yet. But the librarians definitely, this is something that she worked with.
Okay. And I thought with the pilot, there was some linkage that she referenced that they started using.
Well, she, she has been working with an e-text committee. I'm not sure, I don't recall whether they met this year or not, but I know she's had an e-text committee in the past, recent past. And I know that group has been looking at trying to evolve that within a district. Each librarian does have access to an iPad, and they've been doing some research along those lines. So I wouldn't be surprised if some of this money would go towards some further investigation down those lines, yeah, in that, in that area.
Okay. So, on the, on the list that's proposed, it sounds like we have a consensus. It wasn't fast, it wasn't fun, but I just want to make sure the, the administration is clear on what we're clear on, all right? So that there's no misunderstanding, and we can move forward. Are we, we good?
I think I got it.
Chris?
Just on the last one, just to sum up where that ended up, which is where I thought it ended up, which is, I think we all support spending that sum of money on investigating areas to restore. And it may not be exactly the way it was when it was pulled three, four, five years ago, but it's the purpose of what it is, we wholeheartedly support. And you'll come back with, hey, you gave us this, here's what we're thinking. Okay?
Yes, yep. Won't be, it'll be from the librarians. I trust them to develop the list to move forward on this. They're in the most knowledge of what they need in their buildings.
All right. Moving on.
Yeah, let me just talk, just real briefly about two items. One, I want to talk about the Park and the Park Symposium that was held last Friday, I believe. My weeks are getting me, so it was last Friday. Time flies when you're having fun. The symposium was part of the 30 superintendents. We had come together, as I said at a previous meeting, about three months ago to start discussing the implications of Park and Park testing across the state of Illinois, especially when it was related to the high school, but also at, at the third through eighth grade, part of the testing, too. And so, as a result of discussions with the state, with the state superintendent, we decided to hold a symposium to get all the players in the room at the same time and start talking about some of the implications we saw for Park testing. And we had, there were four sessions in the symposium. They ranged from university officials who spoke about what the implications were from Park from their perspective, and how that would affect college readiness. We had school counselors from across our region, and Amy Thompson was there for Elmhurst as part of that discussion on the panel. We also had teachers and how the implications were for their classroom. So a variety of people spoke at the panel. And I, just the highlight, I think the main concern from everybody there was, what is the implications of the amount of testing students are gonna do in the future? That was one overriding concern that was voiced by every panel. Are we over-testing students? And have we gotten to the point where we're doing more assessment and less instruction, and what are the trade-offs for that? Especially the counselors were very passionate, the counselors who spoke were very passionate about the amount of testing high school students may be forced to take. And again, we talked about this in the past. By 11th grade, they're taking ACT, they're taking AP classes, they're taking Park in chunks of three weeks at a time. Just a lot of assessment, a lot of testing across the way. The other thing that was revealing was the university officials that were there, when we asked them how prepared they were to use Park as a college readiness tool as the ACT, we are clearly, from their perspective, years away from using Park as any kind of tool for college readiness. They, they were clear that they would have to really have a lot of data over the years to compare ACT results from, with Park results, and see if there was any correlation with college readiness and Park. Now, part of the, what's a little misleading is, a lot of colleges and universities has signed on as Park endorsers. But it was clear in the discussion that all they were saying was they, they were in support of working with districts who gave Park, but they had no commitment to use Park as part of their acceptance and admissions program in the very near future. They are, you know, looking at ACT, looking at the new alliteration of ACT, they're looking at the new SAT. And, and the other trend, quite frankly, is moving away from standardized testing for college acceptance, and looking at GPA and student records more than anything else. So a lot of universities are exploring that and de-emphasizing standardized testing as part of their admissions program. So that was kind of the symposium and kind of the theme, just to get some of those issues out there. The other thing that was talked about, I know from staff, was how do we motivate students to do their very best when they take the Park? And some of the schools that have field tested the Park said even their most motivated students, by day three of, for example, the language arts section, really had lost their enthusiasm quite a bit to do their best on that test. They were tired. It's a very difficult test, was what we heard. It's very challenging for students. And as one of the counselors or one of the staff members says, I'd like to cheerlead and tell the kids, come on, do it for my district, that's why you gotta perform well on this. But for the students themselves, there's hardly any motivation to do well on this test and put in that amount of time. So that was another major concern from the educators that were there, is how do we motivate kids to really good, give an honest effort to an exam that has very little relationship to them either now or going into the future? And so that was kind of the overall concept at the symposium. Now, since then, there's been some developments across the state, and while no promises have been made, as I said before, with the waiver that was granted from the feds to Illinois, we are committed to having to do Park at, at grade levels. But what's being talked about now is giving the Park in grades three through eight, as was currently proposed. But then at the high school, leaving ACT in place for 11th grade. And instead, you, we have to use Park at one grade level at the high school. So they are exploring using Park in ninth grade as that exam. Now, there's been no commitment, no promises, but that is what's currently being looked at, at the state level as a compromise to the concerns about the high school testing issue. So right now, it sounds like they're looking at, again, ninth grade Park, so we would have Park testing three through nine, and then no testing in 10th, ACT testing in 11th with the Prairie State, and the state would fund that. A long way for consensus, but that's, that's getting a lot of discussion right now. Any questions about Park? Karen?
Dave, clarification on expectations for Park for grade 11. My understanding is it's, it's just next year is all that we are being a reprieve for grade 11.
The latest I heard, that's not the case, that they're looking at this as a permanent, to address the issues on a permanent basis. If, if the Fed, if the federal government and the Department of Education will allow the state of Illinois only to do Park at one grade level at the high school, which would be ninth grade. I think what they'd want to do is pilot it next year and see if it flies. But then, hopefully, the permanent solution would be ACT in 11th, Park in 9th.
I'd like to get clarification, only because I just received an email from PEG that said that the state of Illinois is funding ACT and work keys. Only commitment is next year.
That was the original proposal, Karen. They had only committed to next year. And that, that was before the discussion about ninth, only ninth grade Park and ACT. Now, I think the discussion has turned to, well, do we permanently fund ACT? And do Park just in ninth grade? Because they wouldn't have to fund Park in 10th grade. They could use that funding. It would be cost neutral for the state and just fund ACT at the 11th. But they had originally only promised ACT for one year.
John?
So this is a settlement that has to be incorporated into the waiver, the federal waiver?
That's the question. Can they go back to, you know, what, what freedom do they have to make that decision at the state level and still not violate the waiver from the Department of Education?
Are we the only state seeking that relief? Or are we the only state that has Park as a condition of our waiver?
You know, I don't know that, John. I, this has been a changing landscape across the US. I mean, I've had districts, you know, states pull out of Park. I've had states that pulled out of their waivers, or have been denied their waivers. You know, the state of Washington was just revoked on their waivers, and now they're struggling with school of choice again. And there's some defiant districts that are saying, we're turning down the federal dollars. We're not gonna do school of choice. We're just turning down Title I funding and Title II funding. It's not worth it. So that discussion is all over the country about what they're doing with this.
So in other words, we're having another one-on-one discussion with the Department of Education, where we tend not to do well in the state of Illinois, or we're forgotten.
Karen, I'll circle back in a second. I didn't mean to cut you off. Margaret?
And I, I am not clear on this, but somehow I had word, I heard word that Wisconsin was also considering this process. So I, I think this, the idea of, of Park testing in high school is challenging for numerous states. So I think a lot of states are exactly where we are in Illinois, and trying to find reasonable alternatives and still be in compliance. From the conference that I was at today for Title I, Malina Wright indicated that she's been quite involved with the waiver, and that as they're going back to the federal government, the original waiver, they are only making slight adjustments to. So they won't be in the same boat that some of the other states are, where they're back to the beginning again. So it will be very close, and there won't be a lot of changes from the original. So.
So what you're saying, though, Ellen, is that there won't be much change to the waiver that the federal government gave to us that specifies Park?
Yes, but right now, she indicated the federal government only requires one year. And when they asked specifically if there would be testing at 9, 10, and 11, she said the legislature had not determined what they would fund and what they would not fund, but it was still being discussed. But that would be a small change in the original waiver. So that was why it was still up for discussion. So there was no consent, there was no answer on that yet.
So that's what I wanted to caution us on, is there's a lot of different perspectives, and very passionate about their position, perspective. And there is Park for 15 states, there is smart balance, and there's ACT, and then there's the higher education, our colleges. Okay? So there's just a lot of moving parts. So my, my, my caution is that we need to still be paying attention to what's going on, and continue the advocacy. And the intent is very good. A lot of it comes down to the devils and the details, as it always is. And so we, we, we just need to, we need to advocate, yeah, we need to pay attention to what's going on.
I have one question that may or may not have been, that you may or may not be able to answer. But, so we've established Park's not getting anybody into college, but the ACT still will. Are we still gonna adhere to the Plan Explorer, or Explorer Plan ACT program?
Well, the problem with that is unless we start moving toward Aspire, which is the new version of Explorer Plan ACT, we will eventually run out of tests to use for Explorer Plan because ACT is not producing them. So we would be in a position of purchasing old tests for at least a year or two, but I'm got a feeling after that, you're gonna run out of options. So that's still to be determined. But ACT is pretty clear that they're, you know, the Explorer Plan in its present version is going to be obsolete.
So, so if we still wanted to be student-focused and concentrate on getting our kids, the education they need to get into the best college they can, we would not only have to do Park, but we'd also then have to subscribe to Aspire as well?
Yes. I think that's what you're gonna be faced with. And again, that's the concern that was voiced at the symposium about the amount of testing. It's a real dilemma because, you know, Park obviously is not gonna go away. But then how do you do the kind of information gathering about how well our kids are ready to take a college readiness exam if you only give it in 11th grade? It's way too late. The magic of Explorer Plan was, we could actually get snapshots of the potential of where students were gonna be, and do things before they hit that critical point in 11th grade. This, you know, depending on what you do, could take that option away and say, we're not gonna have data that would be related to college readiness until 11th grade.
We have the MAP test, second through eighth grade, which we have correlated to college and career readiness. I mean, we have the MAP that can be correlated. So it's, it's the ninth and 10th grade that you would have a gap. So it's not all the way through the, all the grades. So that's still in place, the MAP test.
We've correlated, but there are correlations. They're not the people that authored the test correlations. Yeah, no, I, I understand, yeah, no, I, I understand that. We could still, I mean, would we still have time for MAP? I mean, it's
Well, that's, that's the other question. What do you do with MAP along with Park? And Aspire goes down to third grade. Now, it hasn't been, you know, I haven't seen the version, but they have a version now, ACT, that's correlated with the ACT going all the way down to third grade. So while we have developed our own trajectory on college readiness starting in third grade, now ACT has done that with their new version of their testing in every grade level. So theoretically, you could shift out of MAP and go to ACT Aspire all the way through your system, and now you're aligned to college readiness according to ACT. Now, I haven't seen it. I don't know what it looks like, how accurate it is, but that is a potential. It comes back to the question, though, again, how much testing are you gonna do for kids? The other factor, don't forget, is you have para, and you have to test for para. So now you've got another layer of assessment, and is MAP and Aspire appropriate to evaluate teachers on student growth?
And does para apply to all 50 states?
No.
Just Illinois?
Just Illinois.
So yet another reason, if you want, you want your kid to get into the college, the best college they can, to not live in Illinois. I mean, how many reasons they can make them up with? Sorry, a little editorial comment for free. And I, and I have to pass on, I, you know, every time I think we're going on and on, I keep looking at that clock, and I think, well, boy, are we making great time. It dawned on me mid that discussion that that clock stopped two hours ago. So we got that going for us. So if we're finished with that discussion, how about, oh, John, go ahead.
Just, there's three purposes of testing. How's the kids doing? How's the teacher? How is the system doing? And how shall we evaluate our teachers? And certainly, the government can figure out a way to have one test do all three in the future. I hope it's someday a dream. Oh, quit shaking your head. Oh, quit shaking your head.
I could go on an editorial rant at this point, but I'm not, I'm not going to. I will, my argument, just let me say this, my argument for assessment is, assessment should be used to improve instruction, to get kids to learn at their maximum rate. That's what we should be using assessment. And that discussion's totally getting buried in this. There is nothing about, how is the assessment improving classroom practice, improving instruction for kids? How do I know as a teacher how my kids are doing? We're doing all this other testing, and that part, I am really worried for the future is going to be lost in this. And everything in education and research says, you should be doing formative assessment in the classroom to evaluate how well kids are doing and to be able to reteach those kids who don't master and move on. And we haven't had that discussion in a while.
So I suspect if you put on the floor, and I apologize for the editorial comment, I can't help myself, that we just had testing so that teachers could understand where their kids are and actually help kids. I think you'd get seven votes, and if the legislature would just leave it at our hands, I think we could do a better job. All right. Karen?
Yeah, because the objective is student growth and instruction. But just to clarify, though, we were also told on May 2nd, is that park will not take science on. So it's just math and English, language arts?
Yeah, but now they're talking about, maybe we bring science back in another version, either as an ISAT, another version of ISAT.
So we're going to have NWEA MAP, we're going to have ACT, although, we'll have park, but park is going to be third grade through eighth grade, which basically what it's ended up being is an ISAT replacement, and then we don't have anything for high school. And then ACT, which is now not being adopted or talked about at the state of Illinois, is now looking at the whole spectrum, which is what the whole original intent was for why the federal government and the Illinois legislation was advocating for this issue. So, and this just actually solidifies my point, is that we can't think that the decision is done and that we shouldn't advocate for what we're about, which is student growth and instruction, helping our students and helping our employees, that's, you know, that's all they want, too. Otherwise, it's all a lot of bureaucracy and a lot of lack of education, or we're taking away the time for educating. And that's what our employees want to do, and that's what our students want to do, and that's what our community wants to invest taxpayer dollars for education, bottom line.
Before it gets too depressing, what do you think we move on to the superintendent's consent agenda and get a lot done in a little time?
Let me just, I was going to finish up, just with an update on the waiver, the waiver and what it means right now, as far as we know, okay? But, you know, Illinois did receive the waiver. So, one of the things that we will not be offering next year is school of choice, that option has now gone away. So the 20% of our Title I dollars that we had earmarked for transportation is now freed up to be spent back to our buildings. So that's good news. The other piece that we were facing was the obligation this coming year to use another 20% for supplemental educational services. And what that meant was, we would have to go out and contract with outside agencies to provide tutoring and support for students as part of our Title I money. So, in theory, 40% of our money would have been tied up this coming year in obligations between transportation and supplemental services. Those are now gone, we are freed up to then use our Title I money with much more freedom than we presently have. So that's the good news out of the waiver. We are notifying parents who did take advantage of school of choice this past year, that they can continue in the school of their choice that they selected last year, but that we will not be providing transportation, and a letter is going out to those parents. I think it either went out or it's going out by the end of the week. So, that's the status on that with the waiver. So, greater flexibility for our Title I funds, and, you know, we still have to meet the evaluation requirements and park requirements for the waiver.
Real quick, on the school of choice, when we offered that last year, it was with the full understanding that if it changed, so this is not a new, this was something that when the parents chose to do this, they were told that this could happen?
We were very clear, and we repeated that a number of times. We suspected that either because of the new requirements of No Child Left Behind, that 100% would have to be proficient, that we would have either no schools that would be school of choice, or Illinois may get the waiver, but we were very clear in the parent meetings I attended with parents, that that was probably a real possibility for this year, so.
Okay. Superintendent's consent agenda, we have items A through F. Anyone want to remove any of those items? Hearing not, hearing no removals, can I have a motion to approve items A through F? John?
I move that we approve the superintendent's agenda consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, and F, as proposed.
We need a second for that. Emily, seconded by Emily, moved by John, Mrs. Walsh, please.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner? Dr. Harrell? Oh, okay. Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. We have six ayes, no nays, one absent. That motion passes. The next is the superintendent's action item agenda, these are all donations. So let me just preview them, and then we can take them one at a time. There are, item A is donations to York High School to support the J. Kyle Braid Foundation, $750,000, $750 from the Elmhurst Eagles, and $1,500 from the Thing 123 Foundation. So, actually, why don't we take them one at a time? So, if I can have a motion for that, for that item? John?
Can the chair rule on whether we can do all three with a single omnibus motion?
That'd be great, but we'd need a sergeant-at-arms.
Okay, go.
All right, all right. So the second, item B, is an approval to Jackson School. $850 from the PTA to support the purchase of hand dryers. And then, item C is the approval of a donation to Jefferson School, which is $1,630 from their dad's club to support a new sign with some additional money thrown in from the district. So, those are the three items. Do I have a motion, an omnibus motion? Mr. McDonough?
I move that we, the Board of Education approve the donations of $1,500 and $750 from Thing 123 and Elmhurst Eagles Youth Football. These donations are accepted in accordance with policy 8.80, Gifts to the District. In addition, that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Jackson School PTA in the amount of $850 to purchase hand dryers for the school's bathrooms. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy 880, Gifts to the District, and that the Board of Education approve the donation of $1,630 from the Jefferson School Dad's Club to be used toward the purchase of a new school sign.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Margaret. Moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Donation for three schools, Mrs. Walsh.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Next is upcoming meetings, and I'll be as quick as I can. Wednesday, May 14th, is a special closed session of the Board of Education for discussion of employment of employee. Tuesday, May 20th, Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 PM, and I will point that all of these meetings are in this building. Tuesday, May 27th, is our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30. Wednesday, June 4th, is our Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, June 10th, is a special board closed session for discussion of employment of employee. Thursday, June 12th, is a special Board of Education meeting, again, for that same purpose if needed. Next is action items on closed session business. Emily?
I move that the Board of Education uphold the administrative recommendation of the five-day suspension for Student H, and as such, Student H should complete the suspension days effective May 15, 2014.
Do I hear a second? Thank you, Shannon. Moved by Emily, seconded by Shannon. Just, yeah, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? That motion carries. Any board communications? Hearing none, and having no further items on our agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.